Hi, motion passes seven zero.
All right, next item is small call on members of council present in county school, thank you for being here, it's Stacy you. And item four is public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak before the council this evening? Seeing none, I will close public forum at seven oh five. Item five on our agenda is to consider acceptance of minutes, councillors we have two sets of minutes. The first is the minutes from the regular meeting of the New York City Council for October fifteenth twenty twenty five. And at this time I would accept the motion to approve those minutes.
I will make the motion.
Thank you councillor Ward, do I have a second?
Sir.
Thank you councillor Ward, any discussion or changes? So okay, seeing none, you can call the roll please.
Councillor Glazberg.
Aye.
Councillor Lamontina.
Aye.
Councillor Dogble.
Aye.
Councillor Eagleson.
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone.
Aye.
Councillor Ward.
Aye.
Councillor Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
You and the next seven minutes is the, are the minutes from the October eighteenth twenty twenty five budget workshop. And at this time I would accept the motion to approve those minutes.
I will make the motion.
Thank you councillor Ward, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you councillor Lamontina, any corrections, discussion or changes? Okay, seeing none, you can call the roll please.
Councillor Glazberg.
Aye.
Councillor Lamontina.
Aye.
Councillor Dogble.
Aye.
Councillor Eagleson.
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone.
Aye.
Councillor Ward.
Aye.
Councillor Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Excellent, okay. Item six is nominations, appointments, elections and resignations. In this evening there is one Geraldine Brezner hand appointment to the Arts Culture and Tourism Commission with a term expiration of April twenty twenty eight. Before we require some motion to approve this appointment, I have a question for the town manager. Do we, Ms. Brezner hand is currently an alternate on the floor. Do we need a resignation from as an alternate so that Ms. Brezner hand can be approved as a full member?
I think by pointer as a full member you're creating the vacancy in alternate, so she does not need to.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying, so then at this time I would accept a motion to approve Ms. Brezner hand's appointment.
I will, what?
So moved.
I have a second.
Thank you councillor Dogble and thank you councillor Ward. Any discussion on Ms. Brezner hand's appointment? Councillor Glazberg.
I've been working with Jerry on the commissioning for Ohio now and I fully support voting right as a full member. I'm looking forward to continuing to serve with him.
Excellent, thank you very much.
We reiterate what he said, I know Geraldine, she's an excellent person, I think she'd make a great number.
Excellent, thank you councillor Lamontina, any other discussion on this appointment? Okay, seeing none, you can call the roll please.
Councillor Glazberg.
Aye.
Councillor Lamontina.
Aye.
Councillor Dogble.
Aye.
Councillor Eagleson.
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone.
Aye.
Councillor Ward.
Aye.
Councillor Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Excellent, okay, at this time, it is now time for the report of the town management, so I will turn over the chair.
Thank you madam chair, the first item in my written report was that the Department of Revenue Administration has certified the towns two thousand twenty five property tax rate at nineteen dollars and forty two cents per thousand and reflected increase of one dollar and fourteen, one dollar and fourteen cents over last year. Rate changes driven by modest increases across all tax components lay rise in the towns. Overall assessed valuation, as I've been mentioning, last year the valuation of the town was one billion seven hundred thirteen million eight hundred thirty thousand eight hundred thirty seven dollars. That went up eleven million nine hundred ninety nine thousand, six hundred five dollars to one billion seven hundred twenty five thousand eight hundred fifty, seven hundred twenty five million eight hundred fifty thousand four hundred twenty two dollars. So we saw the last year in town tax rate was four dollars and thirty seven cents per thousand, there's a fifty cent increase to four dollars and eighty seven cents per thousand. The local school went up sixty one cents from twelve dollars and twenty four cents per thousand to twelve dollars and eighty five cents. State education went up one cent from one ten to one eleven, and the county went up two cents from fifty seven cents to fifty nine cents. So the impact of a single family median home, which is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars assessment, which is interesting because I was looking up some little notes and I remember it was three hundred thousand dollars in the New Market. The town portion of the tax bill will have three hundred and twenty five dollars to three thousand one hundred sixty five dollars and fifty cents. The local school went up three hundred ninety six dollars and fifty cents to eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars and fifty cents. State education went up six dollars and fifty cents to seven hundred twenty one dollars and fifty cents. The county went up thirteen dollars to three hundred eight three dollars and fifty cents, so the average bill went up seven hundred, the average home went up seven hundred forty one dollars. Tax bills have been distributed, the due date is December fourth. Next item is, I just want to provide some background on a potential warrant article that's on the agenda for first reading this evening. We've been talking with the Director of Finance Administration and our auditors that about the solid waste special revenue fund. When it was set up, it was originally to establish the expectation that revenues such as what we pay for bags and recycling proceeds would be sufficient to cover the operating cost of our solid waste program. As we discussed in the past, that fund is not generating enough revenue for stainless operations. You had the recycling market crash and then the bags just never covered the costs. If we were, we'd be charging a certain amount of money for the bags. Based on this trend and as I said, following recognition of our orders, we're going to propose that the fund be dissolved. If approved, the solid waste funds remaining balance would be transferred to our general fund balance and ongoing solid waste operations would be questioned within the general fund moving forward. So basically, instead of earmarking those funds just for the solid waste, maybe just go ahead as another revenue slide in the revenue budget and just offsetting the general, it's really a bookkeeping situation. As I said, the change will simplify financial management, better on expenditures with the town overall operating cost. Another item is, sooner than later, we're going to be going towards automated trash collection. Which we have to figure out, how do you do a page you throw system when nobody sees what's in the hood? So we've got one of the, I know the city of Dover, as I mentioned, is going to be getting rid of their page and throw system. The city of Concord right now is trying a modified version of a page you throw system with curbside automated collection. So this is just kind of probably get us ready for that point in time where it just, it comes back into the operating budget. Into the general fund budget. Any questions on that?
Councillor Lamontina. I do have a series of questions, do you want to address them now or when we do the? So, let's do something now because I'm, I'm going to be not, I'm not going to be at the next meeting. And I know the bill was not going to be at there either, so. All right, so the first question I have is, if the revenues do not meet expenses, how did we accumulate two point four million dollars into this account? You mean to the fund balance? Because it did at one point. So how, how long have we been carrying that balance and why haven't we been using it? We, we haven't been using it because we haven't had a large project that we have to, you have to use it for solid waste. So it can't go back into the general fund fund balance. Okay. Seems like a lot of money. That's a lot, yeah. Two point four million dollars and we say, you know, we expect a million dollars in and at least a million dollars or more. We've been holding there for a while. How do we get two point four million? So, take this question, okay, so how is this going to work if we approve this, okay, two point four? The voters have to approve it. Okay, so it wasn't a warrant article in March, the voters approve it, do we, does that two point four million get moved into the general fund at that point in time? So we're going to end two thousand twenty six fiscal year with a big surplus. We would end, we would start to, yes, would have to, would add an additional two point, yes. So. Well, I don't know, what do you want, what do you? We're going to end up with a two point one million dollar surplus. Well, yeah, but we can't, we don't. And we can hold back fifty, five hundred thousand dollars of generally be held. Well, here's the problem, we don't know it's going to pass. I'm assuming it will. It says recommended. You can't, no, we can't say, I cannot in good conscience tell you, you two million dollars if we don't know it's going to pass. All right, let's assume it passes and we put two point one million into. And then fiscal year twenty eight, we use additional. At the end of the fiscal year with a two, a two plus million dollar surplus, right? Addition to our current fund balance, not surplus fund balance, yes. So we're going to end up with this fund balance of more than two million dollars. We already have a fund balance of more than two million dollars. And we're going to end up, and normally what we do. Our fund, but let me clarify, our fund balance is about four, I believe it's right now about five million dollars. That's five percent. Our fund balance policy is we should be between five and ten percent of all monies that we collect for the school, county and town. So we're on the bottom end of that. If we had two million dollars, we'd be in the middle of where we should be by our fund balance policy. Okay, so if it does pass, your intent at this point in time is to basically keep most of that money in. Try to rebuild our fund balance. Okay. Does this create any budget issue, any issues with solid waste? Nope. It's, it literally, it's just a bookkeeping. We're already subsidizing as it is. And there's no impact on the next year's budget? Nope. All we do is we take the revenue from, instead of earmarking the revenue to that special fund, it just goes to the general fund. All right, so the bottom line is we're going to end up keeping most of that money in our general fund balance. Yes. Those are the questions I have.
Thank you councillor Lamontina, other questions or comments or discussion for the town? Councillor Dogble.
Just to stick on the solid waste thing for just a minute. In switching over from the page you go system to whatever that system is to be. Can we anticipate an initial investment that we would have to make in order to get this program off the ground?
So part of my recommendation will be next year is we take some of this fund balance and put it into a capital reserve fund to buy the totes that are going to have to come through. Because we're going to have to buy those six million ninety pound totes, or we can make everybody buy one that you see on the side, you see on the side of the road on those. The, the problem is, it's not, we're, this is being, not the, the, this solid waste fund, but the automated collection is being done by the companies because they don't have the workforce to get out there and pick up the, because usually you need two people on a truck and they can't, don't have that anymore, so they're going down to one on a truck with the arms throwing it out.
So let's say this, the warrant article, the, the, this article, as you, as you suggest, it appears on the warrant and it gets passed.
Yep.
Or it doesn't pass, let's say it doesn't pass. Can we use the existing fund balance to make the investment to do the switch over?
Yes, my idea is yes.
Okay, so the, so the money would be available.
Yes, meanwhile, yeah.
Okay.
And again, this is, in a week or two, you're going to have a first reading of an extension of the current contract for three years. So again, another three years to.
Well, that's exactly what, well, so, that's kind of why it's important.
Yeah, it's not a, we're not going to be doing this overnight.
Yeah, no, and I mean, I can see, I can see the value in maintaining the fund until after the switch over has happened and the investment has, has been made. Rather, because it's dedicated fund and it doesn't, you know, over two years, things can happen. You may go and decide to move to, I don't know, some city far, far away or something and nobody remembers what the agreement was because the council is no longer made up of the same people. And having the fund, a dedicated fund available at that, at that point might be beneficial. So it doesn't look like, oh, now we have to tap into our general fund balance in order to, you know, make this investment. So that's something worth considering as we, as we consider this, I think. I also have a question about this term, the median family home, is that purely by, is that purely a value, the six hundred fifty thousand, so half of the homes in town.
Above, not below.
Okay, very good.
And I have my last portion of my report. Just at the town new market, partnering with DOT and Strathford Park Land to conduct a road safety audit at the intersections of Exeter Road in Bennett Way and Terrace Drive. Study identified pedestrian bicycle safety access management and site distance limitations as a primary safety concerns. The RSA proposes near, intermediate and long-term improvements, but the total projects ranging from seventy thousand to three point six seven million, depending on the scope. Some crash history, there's been sixty three crashes reported for two thousand thirteen, two thousand twenty, thirteen involving injuries. Most occurred during clear weather and peak hours, which is the five p.m. spike. There's been pedestrian bicycle safety issues, long crossing distance, insufficient lighting, high vehicle speeds. Average is thirty six, thirty seven to thirty mile and lack of buffered sidewalks or bike lanes were identified as major risks. And multiple, multiple closely spaced driveways increase conflict points. Upper news existed in solid entrances and configured traffic, for example, the former Rite Aid and Nix place of one drive in. And there's slight distance issues with utility poles and vegetation and multiple lanes reduce driver visibility at key intersections. Some of the recommendations in the near term would be add flashing beacons that we had in other places in town. Clear, clear vegetations and relocate signs and consolidate utility poles and install pedestrian refuge islands. So basically, in the middle, put an island, just in case of safety. There is discussion for intermediate, would we eliminate the southbound right turn lane of one oh eight, that'll slow down traffic. As we mentioned, create share access between Rite Aid and Nix. Restrike Bennett Way and widen sidewalks and add bump outs and additional weekends in that area. I remember standing out there too and it's funny, you feel like you're standing outside, but when you feel the breeze of the cars flying by, you know that, yeah, you feel the danger. Other ideas would be construct two roundabouts, raise median island and modify driveways for right in, right out only access. Improve crosswalks, lighting and access management and address long-term drainage and utility relocation. So the next steps would be pursue funding via highway safety improvement program, transportation alternatives program and statewide transportation improvement program, conduct further signal warrant analysis for traffic counts and coordinate improvements of downtown revitalization and corridor plans. Basically, how do we continue main street into that part of town? Basically, a lot of what was said when we were out there is we need a road diet. It's a very wide area, coming from a very narrow area to a very wide area, your initial, what you want to do is speed, so, and it's not a place to do it.
And for a pedestrian to cross five lanes essentially, is obviously takes a lot longer and more guts. And you're less visible to people coming from another direction.
That's all I have to say.
Councillor Lamontina.
I said, why two roundabouts, one at Bennett Way and one at?
This is where I'll say I'm not an engineer.
Okay. I just told it in a really good way.
Yeah, so I, I think that this is a great thing to pursue. I mean, I turn left on Terrace Drive a lot coming from the rec center and it could take ten minutes to turn left there. And it's too bad that we get these kind of reports the day after our budget is signed off, so we can't do anything for a year, but. And do some of these things require us to own the road? Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be my answer to that. It's not, it basically is not our money to do some of those.
And I think before you go to a roundabout, which is so expensive compared to the, you know, near term options. You want to see what effect an island could have and eliminate, before you go and, oh, now, you know, rather than assuming that that's the way we should go, but.
Especially if we're going to be looking at South Main, Jerry Ave, Exeter, when it comes down to Florida Ventures and how that may be redone. It may be a guy, yeah, the ball, try to look at how do we do it all at once to narrow it down.
But like Hershey would be another.
Yeah.
Councillor Lamontina, we will go back to you.
Okay, so I was surprised to see that the lights are not considered because of the railroad tracks. And so if we do the Jerry Ave thing and all that, would lights, potential light be still?
We have to look, yes, we have to look into that, yeah, it is a, it's difficult, right, because it is difficult with the numbers of, with the railroad track. So that's what we'd have to engineer and find out, I don't know yet.
Councillor Lamontina, we'll go back to councillor Lamontina.
I'm just wondering when it says like near term, I know we still have to acquire that road, but.
Welcome to municipal government, near term is probably five years.
Okay, I'm just wondering.
Long term is thirty.
We've been acquiring this road from this day, for at least the last five years.
Yeah.
And we keep hearing it's imminent.
Yeah, we do the same, yeah.
Councillor Lamontina.
Just in, in response to the question about the potential of a signaled intersection. The, the state DOT much prefers roundabouts at this point because they are easier to maintain, they're less costly initially and in upkeep and they offer much better pedestrian safety opportunities than, than signaled intersections do. So it's more likely that we would see a roundabout. Even on a, on a heavily traveled road like one oh eight, I can't remember, I looked at the counts, I think it's seventeen thousand vehicles per day. Which is quite a lot, close to, you know, like Route One in Portsmouth. Not quite as bad as that, as Route One, but they're considering roundabouts there. So I, I think, so, so you can see that if Route One can take that, you know, one oh eight would be able to, you know, flow. And the advantage of course is that you don't have to stop, you, you have, you maintain flow and with a railroad crossing, that's quite essential. In case anybody ever wonders if we're going to get a light and I think probably not. Hopefully not.
Any kind of questions?
They do totally unrelated to our analysis topic. With the government shutdown, are we seeing any impacts on potential monies coming in for, say like some of the projects?
The ones that we're, the ones that we're working on, we already have the money. So like the dispatch center, we're not worried about that right now. Other things, it's a lot of the state money, so we're not seeing that big of an impact yet. But the longer we go, the less money the state's going to have to divvy up to us. And I, to be honest, and the other thing I have not asked is, have you seen an uptick in rental or welfare assistance?
Councillor Blackstone.
I have another unrelated request. During the budget committee, Sean told me that, Sean told us that he had three priorities for his wastewater treatment and his number one priority was he wanted to.
And his number one priority was he wanted to have system stability, right? So right now, we get a lot of data. But since none of us are sanitation engineers, I don't think any of us can look at the data and tell you if the system is stable. And I was watching the World Series and, you know, they have this new thing OPS now, which is like a combination of stuff. Could, could Sean, Sean must have a definition in his mind of what stability is. Um, where, you know, OPS is like if it's, you know, one, if it's above one, you're like, you know, you're making ten million dollars a year. If it's below one, you're, you know, you're making a lot less, right? Could he come up with something which goes from zero to ten? I, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, I could ask him.
And could we just get a plot?
Yeah.
And so then we could, because our, I mean, our goal is to help him. If, if he's going to, if he's unstable, we wanna, you know?
You need the systems.
I mean, you know, he comes here, you know, he, he needed those shades.
Yep.
And we just said, great, you know, like, we're, we're here to support it, right? But I think it's a lot easier for us to support it if we understood. And the data he gives us, I'm sure is valid and it's very good, but I can't do anything with it. And I'm an engineer, you know, like.
I'll ask her, yeah.
Other council questions for the town manager? Oh, you're going? Oh, okay. Um, thank you very much, Town Manager. We will now move over to, um, committee reports, any committee reports this evening, Councilor.
The Arts Culture Tourism Commission met last night and we voted for and approved an order for a mosaic mural. For the fifty anniversary, um, it was for four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. It will be three hundred and fifty tiles that will be painted by people in town, uh, each individual one. Then they will be sent back to the company and they'll put it into a frame and then it will be hung somewhere in town. Uh, currently, the, uh, the wall across, the retaining wall across from Watershed Restaurant is, um. The place that we were talking about. Um, so, yeah, that, I'm excited about that, the, some of the projects on their website that show what other towns have done. It's really, really interesting. Um, a large portion of the meeting was spent discussing the decrease for the arts in the proposed budget that the council is voting on tonight. Specifically, the Arts Culture and Tourism line item and what can still be accomplished with that money that is going to be in the budget. After the decrease from department heads, uh, you know, the department head asked for a certain number and there was a, a substantial decrease. The result was a three thousand dollar decrease, uh, for the commission. So, um, one of the things that the commission had approved to start planning at our October seventh meeting. Was to start looking at the Elm Street mural, um, the, all that art, um, the art falling apart, the wall showing its age. Um, without the additional funding from the budget, the commission is trying to figure out how the project might be funded. In the past, Town Manager Fornier had mentioned, uh, that if a project comes up and additional funding might be needed. The chair could reach out and, and see what the town might be able to do. So, um, the, the commission voted to ask Chair Trevor Smith to reach out to Town Manager Fornier. Uh, and see if there is potential that the town can help out, um, you know, beyond what was budgeted. Or put into the budget that we'll be voting on tonight. The commission is also seeking funding from several other sources, um, including, uh, receiving some buy-in from Eric Chemberg, who owns the wall. He has agreed to, you know, help out as well.
Okay, um, questions or comments for Councilor? Councilor.
Oh, the, um, the pumping station down at Creighton Street. Uh, there's the wall that faces the river, it might be a, a good place to put some kind of mosaics or something. I'm sure Sean will be thrilled about that.
Yeah, I, that location has been talked about a little bit with the potential, you know, property, uh, going through. But I think that everything is just way too preliminary to, to actually make a planning for that, they don't know what'll, what that would like down there. But yes, I, I agree, it would look really nice there.
Other questions at times for Councilor? Okay, seeing none, are there any other committee reports this evening? Councilor Ward.
Uh. I, I would say the budget committee met, uh, we didn't have a forum that night. So instead, the school was supposed to give a presentation about their budget. So we let them have their, we didn't call an order or anything, we just let them speak to the camera about their presentation. We didn't vote on anything, it was just a chance for everyone at home to see what's, what exactly, uh.
Is that, is that good?
Yep.
Okay, um, questions for Councilor? Okay, other committee reports, Councilor Blaisen?
Uh, the Charter Commission has finished, um, its work and, um, I've sent you all a copy of it. Um, there's going to be a presentation by the Charter Committee to the Town Council, um, to go over, um, you know. At changes that would be relevant to the Town Council.
Questions for Councilor Blaisen or Councilor?
I, I've no, noticed in the meeting that someone mentioned the idea of having like a red line copy, is that something that will be presented?
I have one.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I have one too.
I did you.
Did you want one?
I just wanna see what the change.
Yeah, sure. Are you gonna send?
I'll, I'll send it to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions for Councilor Blaisen? All right, other committee reports. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to resolutions and ordinances in the second reading. And Councilors and Seamen, there is one, and that is Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six dash seventeen. Approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-second budget. And at this time, I would accept the motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ward, and do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Northwood, and I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the council knows, we had a long, day-long discussion on the budget. There is one item that would be in order, and that would be somebody to make a motion to amend the budget. And add five thousand dollars to line zero one four four one five four nine zero, direct assistance rent.
So.
And, um, second. That was the, just the one for Council to request.
Um, any discussion on this amendment? Great, seeing none, if you could call the board. Councilor Blaisber?
Aye.
Councilor Lamatina?
Aye.
Councilor Dorblu?
Aye.
Councilor Eagleson?
Aye.
Councilor Orin Blackstone?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to you.
With that being done, the new number in the budget is nineteen million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred eight dollars. It was, they just, minimal increases, the same percentage increase as before.
So if any, um, any discussion, comments or questions on the, um, on the budget as amendment? Okay, seeing none, you can call the board please. Councilor Blaisber?
Aye.
Councilor Lamatina?
Aye.
Councilor Dorblu?
Aye.
Councilor Eagleson?
Aye.
Councilor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to you. Okay. Our next item on the agenda, resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. Quotes this evening there at one, two, three, four, five. It's your cocoa, okay. Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six dash eighteen, this is the warrant article to issue one hundred thousand dollar bonds for Cushing Room. And Loverland Drive Stormwater Improvement Project. Whereas it is the wish of the Town Council to include on the town warrant the following proposed warrant article. To raise one million, four hundred forty thousand dollars through bonds or notes for the design and construction. Of stormwater system improvements along Cushing Road and Loverland Drive. The project will address drainage issues and improve water quality in accordance with state and federal environmental standards. It is anticipated that the town will receive up to two hundred sixteen thousand dollars in principal forgiveness. From the state revolving loan, fund loan program. If approved, this article will have an impact on the tax rates. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, four hundred forty thousand dollars in no sense. For the purpose of designing and construction of stormwater system improvements along a segment of Cushing Road and Loverland Drive. In accordance with state and federal water quality guidelines. The project, such sum to be raised for the issuance of serial bonds or notes not to exceed one million, four hundred forty thousand dollars. And in accordance with provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, N H R S A, chapter thirty-three. And to authorize the Town Council and Treasurer to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the date, term of payment and interest rate thereon. And to take such actions as may be necessary to affect the issuance, negotiation, sale and delivery of such bonds or notes as shall be in the best interest of the town. And to further authorize the town to apply for, receive and expend federal and state grants. Which may in any time become available in accordance with N H R S A thirty-one colon ninety-five B. And also apply for, receive and expend funds from any other governmental unit or private source to use. For purposes which the Town Council legally appropriate funds and to participate in the state revolving fund, S R F, R S A forty-six colon fourteen. It is anticipated that the town will receive up to two hundred sixteen thousand dollars in principal forgiveness from the state revolving funding program. Um, if passed, it is estimated that this article will have a six cent impact on the tax rate, two-thirds vote required. Now therefore be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council, that the Newmarket Town Council include the above proposed warrant article on the town warrant. And recommend the warrant article for passage, sponsored by Chair Conley by request, first reading, November fifth, twenty twenty-five. Next item, Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six dash nineteen. Warrant article to issue one hundred thousand dollar bonds for the purpose of creating a master plan for the wastewater department. Whereas it is the wish of the Town Council to include on the town warrant the following proposed warrant article to raise one hundred thousand dollars. Through bonds or notes for the development of a comprehensive wastewater master, wastewater department master plan. This project will guide long-term infrastructure improvements and system plan. It is anticipated that the town will receive up to one hundred thousand dollars in principal forgiveness of the state revolving fund loan program. Resulting in no impacts, no impact to the tax rate of approved. And to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars in no sense, one hundred thousand dollars. For the purpose of all work made to create a master plan for the wastewater department. Such sum to be raised by the issuance of serial bonds or notes not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Under and in compliance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, N H R S A thirty-three colon one. Et sec as amended, and to authorize the Town Council to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes. And to determine the date, term of payment and rate of interest thereon. Further, to take such other actions as may be necessary to affect the issuance, negotiation, sale and delivery of such bonds or notes. As shall be in the best interest of the town of Newmarket, New Hampshire. Additionally, to authorize the Town Council to apply for, receive and expend federal and state grants. Which may in any time become available in accordance with R S A thirty-one colon ninety-five B. And also to apply for, receive and expend money from any other governmental unit or private source. To be used for purposes which the Town Council legally appropriate money. It is anticipated that the town will receive up to one hundred thousand dollars in principal forgiveness from the state revolving fund loan program. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council, that the Newmarket Town Council include the above proposed warrant article on the town warrant. And recommend the warrant article for passage, first sponsored by Chair Conley by request, first reading, November fifth, twenty twenty-five. The rest are short. The third item is Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six dash twenty. Warrant article for the issuance of three hundred thousand dollar bonds for the purpose of water infrastructure improvements. To replace water system services in compliance with the federal lead and copper rule. Whereas it is the wish of the Town Council to include on the town warrant the following proposed warrant article for the issuance of. Three hundred thousand dollar bonds and for the purpose of water infrastructure improvements to replace water system services in compliance with the federal lead and copper rule. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred two thousand dollars, four hundred two thousand dollars. For the purpose of requiring a conservation easement on land located under the, at, under the provisions of R S A thirty-six dash A. On sixteen point three acres of the Rosa property that fronts along Wadley Falls Road in Newmarket, tax map R five eighty-one.
This does not seem.
This doesn't seem right.
I'm sorry?
For the purpose, permanent protection of open space, is this?
That's the next one, that's the next resolution.
Federal led and copper rule.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna pull this up.
Okay. I will move on.
But we have the, what, what, you're looking at the water?
So this was, this is twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six dash twenty, and it's warrant article to provide issuance of three hundred thousand dollar bonds.
You are correct, it's not the right article.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to, we'll have that done another day.
Okay.
For first reading.
All right, the next one is Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six dash twenty-one. This is the warrant article to purchase the Rosa property conservation easement for four hundred two thousand dollars. With, um, one hundred forty-five thousand from taxation. Whereas it is the wish of the Town Council to include on the town warrant the following proposed warrant article to purchase a conservation easement on the Rosa property. For four hundred two thousand dollars with one hundred forty-five thousand coming from taxation. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred two thousand dollars, four hundred two thousand dollars. For the purpose of acquiring a conservation easement on land located at, under the provisions. Of R S A thirty-six dash A, on sixteen point three acres of the Rosa property that fronts along Wadley Falls Road in Newmarket. Tax map R five dash eighty-one, for the permanent reduction of, permanent protection, sorry. Of open space, water resources and wildlife habitat. And further, that one hundred forty-five thousand dollars, one hundred forty-five thousand dollars is to be raised by general taxation. And remaining amount to come from grants, other contributions and the Conservation Commission Conservation Fund pursuant to R S. A thirty-six dash eight colon five. If passed, it is estimated this article will amount to eight cents of the tax rate. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council, that the Newmarket Town Council include the above proposed warrant article on the town warrant and recommend the article for passage. First reading, sponsored by Chair Conley by request, first reading, November fifth, twenty twenty-five. And Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six dash twenty-two. This is the decision to rescind the solid waste fund. Whereas the solid waste fund was originally established by Article Two of the nineteen ninety-nine Town Meeting. With the assumption that it would generate revenues sufficient to support operations. And whereas in the recent past, the fund has not generated enough revenues to support operations. And whereas it has been recommended by our auditors to terminate the fund and return operation to the general fund and return. Its fund balance to the general fund's fund balance. And whereas to accomplish this change, the Town's legal council recommends rescinding the provision of R S A thirty-one colon ninety-five dash C. Related to solid waste special revenue fund as established by Article Two of the nineteen ninety-nine Town Meeting. Therefore, now, now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council. That the Newmarket Town Council does hereby rescinding the provision of R S A thirty-one colon ninety-five dash C. Related to solid waste special revenue fund is established by Article Two of the nineteen ninety-nine Town Meeting. And which restricted a hundred percent of revenues from the disposal of solid waste to expenditures from the disposal of solid waste collection and disposal. If rescinded any remaining amounts, then the rescinded solid waste special revenue fund should become part of the general fund accumulated surplus. Sponsored by Chair Conley by request, first reading, November fifth, twenty twenty-five. Okay, and that closes out our resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. We're on to the business in correspondence. Item number one is correspondence to Town Councils, is there any correspondence to be read into the record this evening?
There is none.
Okay, then we will move on to, are there any closing comments by Town Councils, Councilor Blaisber?
Yeah, in going through the budget process this year, specifically with the act commission, uh, I believe that the process could be improved for the future clarity. The line item in the budget is a bit confusing at first glance. And because it is listed as arts, culture, tourism, and it also includes the fireworks every year. For the backyard bash in this year, and this budget is also the, yeah, to fiftieth celebration. Um, I did a little bit of research on it and that there is a possibility that we can move the fireworks to, um. To a separate line item that's special events or community events. And I think that would, uh, be a bit easier for, uh, the council, for me to digest, the council to digest when we're doing the, the workshop. And when the, when cuts come, uh, like, for example, this year, the, the requested amount. the, the requested amount was higher than the proposed amount. And because it's one item, it's kind of up to the department head to decide where, where that cut happens in that fund to a certain extent. So it, it just would be, in my opinion, better in the future if we could separate them.
Thank you, Counselor Blackstone? Counselor Blackstone?
I'd just like to congratulate the rec department and the police department for the Halloween-related activity. I can't remember what the rec thing is called. The hunt, yeah. The hunt was, you know, very well attended. Every town, every place downtown had candy out, and then during Halloween, which would have to be moved, and that, you know, was well-informed. Everybody seemed to realize that it moved, and there didn't seem to be any incident. I saw lots of kids out, and I think everything went very well.
It's funny, I was at my city mayor's conference with thirty of my colleagues from around the state. That was the biggest controversy, was if we're moving our town. The, the good thing was we're all in one room. Are you moving your trick-or-treat? Are we moving your trick-or-treat? We all went around and asked. It was the biggest controversy of the week.
Well, it's good we moved.
Yeah.
Counselor Dorblut?
I'd just like to say thank you to the fire departments from this town and the surrounding towns, and the police departments, and every first responder who came out to the fire at Fieldstone Estates this past week. And I hope that the people who lost their home have found a place to live and are well taken care of into the, into the school season.
Counselor Longton? Any closing comments?
I do have just a couple of things. I'd like to echo my, echo my concern for the families at the Fieldstone Estates fire, and, and also hope, hope it's okay. I also wanted to extend my gratitude to the Charter Commission for, for the work that they did, and that work is not, is not easy. Thinking big thoughts and having deep conversations about the way our town should be run is, they're important conversations, they're worthwhile discussions to have, and, and that work is not, the work isn't simple. And I appreciate the care and dedication with which the commission approached its duties and look forward to reviewing the changes.
Any final comments from anybody else? Okay, seeing then, councilors, our next meeting is November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. At this time, if there are no objections, I will consider us adjourned.
We're all set.